Absolutely, absolutely. Makes a difference, Alan. I hear so much, I mean, you know, it's a quiet back street. So much more noise and traffic, you know.
Yep, yeah. They serve a lot of good uses, it's just.
Yeah. Good evening, Jason. How are you?
Well, Margaret, how are you?
Oh, superb.
How are your new digs?
I like them. You know, I want to be in the back of the room, which I probably can't be, but, you know, I like my green walls.
Good.
It's amazing to hear somebody likes something, right?
Oh, I think, um, hold on a second, I'm gonna, oh, it's seven, all, seven seconds. I will call the special meeting of the board of selectmen to order. It is a special meeting, so there are no changes that can be made to the agenda. Our first order of business is pledge of allegiance. I would recognize Selectman Norrell and ask him to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie. All members of the Board of Selectmen are present. Our next item is approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 2nd, 2020. Has everyone had a chance to review them?
Selectman Norrell will move to approve the meeting minutes from Thursday, July 2nd, 2020.
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza. Selectman D'Souza has voted in the affirmative. Here she is. July 16th, regular meeting minutes.
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 16th, 2020.
Is there a second? Moved by Sarah, seconded by Alan. Any corrections? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Minutes are adopted. July 16th, 2020, public hearing minutes.
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll move to approve the public hearing minutes from July 16th, 2020.
Selectman Norrell will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza. July 27th, special meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the July 27th special meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman Norrell will second that.
So I had a motion by Marie, a second by Alan. Any corrections? Seeing none, Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
See, what I did there is I went backwards that time. You guys are all on my screen in a particular order, it changes. July 31st.
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes from July 31st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Sarah, seconded by Alan. Any corrections? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
So carried. Emergency meeting minutes, August 5th.
Selectman Norrell will move to approve the emergency meeting minutes from Wednesday, August 5th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? That one in particular was in response to the impact of the tropical storm on the town, and I just want to thank you all for making yourselves available in such short order to do that. That was a very important thing, and I really appreciate your flexibility. If there are no other comments, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza. Is there any public participation? This is one of two opportunities for the public to participate in items not on our agenda later this evening. We will entertain any comments that the public may have. Seeing none, there will be another opportunity for the public to participate later in the agenda. We're going to move on now to communications. Whoops, that's my whole decade. The first communication had to do with response to some changing executive orders issued by the Lamont administration pertaining to out-of-state travel, and it was recommended by council that we have a policy in place for out-of-state travel in, into, in particular, COVID-19 hotbed areas. So I wanted to share with you what that policy was. This is implemented under the emergency declaration that we have in place pertaining to COVID-19. Certainly, I'm always willing to take feedback or constructive criticism from members of the board. So I just wanted to make sure you guys had a copy of that. We can talk about that or leave it be. The second piece of communication is a constituent request for the Board to consider renaming Plantation Road in light of some racial insensitivity that the name may connotate. There is a process to do that. It involves a town meeting. A town meeting is the body, according to our charter, town meeting is the process by which we adopt and that we accept and improve roads. So if we were to consider that, that would be something that we would have to do through a town meeting when that becomes feasible. And I wanted to share the communication with you because the constituent asked that I do so. And then I wanted also to let you know that that may be something that shows up on a future Selectmen's meeting agenda for our Board to discuss and consider before forwarding, potentially forwarding to a town meeting. Any questions or comments about that?
Jason, do we know, yeah, Jason, do we know what the history is of the naming of that street originally?
I'm not, other than finding out the legal process, I have not done much research on it. I know that the person, I don't even know if all of the residents of the road have been contacted, so this is at the, we're being asked to consider this stage. It's not the, I'm recommending we do this stage. I know that the constituent had even brought forth a new, a potential new name. But I don't know that all the residents have been contacted. I don't know that they're all on board, or that there's even a majority of them that are on board. So if we were to decide to investigate it further, it would require a fair amount of due diligence still. I'm bringing it to you all because it was a communication that I received with a request for action, and so this body would have to make that action at an appropriate time.
Okay, thanks.
If it would be helpful, I could add it as an agenda item to a future meeting, and you guys could outline specifically the things you want me to look into before the Board takes an official action. That might be a way to go.
Well, I can, I can do the research on what I'm looking for, but I don't have a problem if you put it on the agenda for the future to look at it.
I'll put it in the hopper. I don't think it's going to be at our next one, because that's only next. I keep a running list of action items that we need to consider at some point, and I'll add this to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Next, as many of you are aware, Joanne Slater, after 14 years with us, has gone on to greener pastures. She has retired from town service, effective, well, we had a disagreement about when she retired. She said she's retiring on July 31st. I said she was retiring on August 1st. But that was more of a semantics joke between us. Joanne has retired. We wish her the very, very best. I issued a proclamation in her honor and to show her dedication to the town and also to see her successor succeed, I'd share with you that on her very second day of retirement, she was back in the office helping out, just onboarding her replacement, which I thought was a really kind gesture and a testament to her long service to the town and her dedication. So I wanted to share that with you all, that it's another example of us having very, very good employees here. I would also share that pertaining to Joanne, while I'm singing her praises, in her last week in town service, I actually was receiving phone calls from attorneys to compliment the town on our ability to adapt in the COVID circumstances, particularly by making sure our land records were accessible online. Kevin Rennie, in particular, called specifically to congratulate Joanne and shared with me that East Windsor should consider itself to be a model for how other towns could have provided exemplary customer service in these trying circumstances. And that's wholly owned, wholly accountable to Joanne and her work to get that done. So she, she will be missed. Words and commissions, resignations, reappointments, and new appointments. We have some. So Kirk Monstrem is, has submitted his resignation from two more boards on which he served, the Conservation Commission and the Broad Brooks Mill Study Commission. So a motion would be in order to accept that resignation, those resignations.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Kurt Monstrem on both the Conservation Commission and Broadbrook Mill Commission with regret.
Second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
We appreciate Kurt's service in many capacities over the years and wish him well moving forward.
List of them.
There is, well, there's, but you could do them, I think they're by board.
Yeah, we could.
CIP folks are by board. The only one not on CIP is Mr. Kement.
Make a motion to reappoint Stanley Kement, the Building Commission, regular member for a term expiring 8/1/2020.
Selectman Norrell will second that.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. It says a regular member for term expiring August 1st, 2020. That's already packed.
Right.
So what is the date?
Well, there's two possibilities there. It could be that he had, that that was, we're lining it up with everybody else, or it could be that that is a typo. So let me pull up my Trustee website here.
August 1st is probably when his term is expiring, but the new term would be so many years.
Yep. So we can table that and take it up next week. I can, I can get clarification on that. Can I have a motion to postpone this until our next meeting?
Make a motion, we postpone Stanley Kement's reappointment to the Building Commission until we figure out what the term length would be.
Selectman Norrell will second that.
Any discussion? The question is on postponement. Seeing none, Selectman Baker. Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Thank you for catching that. Apologies there.
I guess I could just make it a motion for all the rest of these guys, right? Make a motion for Robert Leach, William Luce, Adam Mann, Richard Pippen Jr., Catherine Simonelli, and William Towers Jr., all to be reappointed to the Capitol Planning Committee for their regular member terms, which seem to all expire July 31, 2021, if I'm to believe this.
That one is correct. Thank you.
Wise guy.
Selectman Norrell will second that motion.
Any discussion?
Workhorse, Jason, have they all been notified and agreed to rerun?
Yes.
Okay.
And there is still, I believe there's still room for one more member who can be either a Democrat or an unaffiliated voter. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
And our new appointment, David Swain, to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a term expiring November 16th, 2021.
Selectman Norrell will move to appoint David Swain to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a term expiring November 16th, 2021.
Is there a second?
A second.
I heard Charlie and Sarah. Alan, if I missed you, I'm sorry. I just heard Charlie and Sarah. Any discussion on the appointment of Mr. Swain? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Okay. We are now going to move on to Agenda Item 10A, Discussion of Brush Removal. And for this, as you all are aware, we got whacked pretty good with the tropical, tropical storm last week. And I have asked our Public Works Department to put together a couple of options for the Board to consider in terms of assisting residents with brush removal associated with the storm. So we're joined by Len and Joe. Gentlemen, what are your ideas?
Well, we have one item currently. Well, currently, what we're telling people, if anybody calls and wants to know how to get rid of their brush, we are telling them to take it to We Care Denali, which is the former Green Cycle over on Sad, Sad Mill Road in Ellington, Route 140 in Ellington. And we have prepared a little ticket, if you will, with their name, address, and license number on it. And they pick it up here at the town garage, and if they go over there with their brush and this little ticket, the town will be billed. The resident will not have to pay the $5 or $10 to dump their load of brush there, which we're getting a lot of calls and a lot of people are doing that. Of course, we're picking up our brush. We're still picking up our brush on the side of the road. And we need to stop picking it up as, as heavy as we are, because we, you know, I got my mechanic out of the garage, so we're going to start to get back to some normalcy with a smaller crew picking it up, and it may take a few weeks to do that. So anyone that can't get rid of their brush, that has no means to get rid of it, and I'm going to be honest, I'm not thinking there's going to be a lot of that. We are going to set a week aside. We're going to settle this, and when we're done with our brush pickup, we will go around and pick up the people's brush that can't get rid of it. They will have to cut it to four-foot lengths and get it out by the curbsides where we can go get it, but we will pick it up for them and dispose of it. So we were thinking about doing it on the weekend, but it's just, you know, between the overtime, logistics, and even trying to get somebody to work during the summer, you know, on Saturday. They have kids and what have you, so we're going to just pick it up probably in a couple of weeks. We'll set a week aside. We'll make appointments with them and tell them to have it at the curbside, and we'll come get it, and then we'll pay for it. So technically, nobody has to pay to get rid of their brush. We're just not going to go in their backyard and get it for them.
Yeah. And how are we going to communicate to people when the date would be established?
Well, we're getting some calls already. Generally, people are going to call, but we will put it on the website as well. Once we, once we're pretty well picked up with what we're doing and we can target a week, we'll put it on the website, on our page, and probably the home page. It's free. The newspaper will charge us. So that's the plan.
Selectman Baker.
Yeah, you can also put it on the town Facebook page. That sounds like a good idea. I mean, it doesn't seem like there's nearly as much brush as there was for the October storm, but those who have brush have it, right? So I was curious, though, like, when you guys are picking it up, the four-foot lengths, are you, like, physically, two guys throwing, you know, things, picking them up off the ground, or do you have any equipment to get that done?
Well, the bigger pieces, like, when I, I'm saying brush could, we're more concerned with the bigger logs and branches. We'll have our backhoe if we need to, and we can pick it up with a jaw and put it in the back of the truck.
That's what I was wondering, because like, somebody could put an 18-inch diameter, four-foot-long section, plenty of them out there.
Right, well, yeah, we'll, we'll have the backhoe for the big stuff. The little stuff will go by hand. We're picking up a lot of it by hand now, actually, a lot of little stuff.
I'm sorry, did you say this? How much have you picked up? Well, you've picked up your own, like, the town's responsibility stuff, town property stuff. Have you done any residential yet?
No, no, but, but a good number of people have come and picked up their sheet of paper to bring it to Green Cycle.
Okay, so the only place to get that is the town garage?
Yes.
And they, do they have to verify anything to get that, or?
Yes, they need to show their license to show that they're a resident of East Windsor. We made arrangements with We Care Denali. They're going to put little, a little note on the ticket, and so we don't have everybody and their brother going there and dumping on the town of East Windsor. You can't just go in and say, "I'm from the town of East Windsor." They know that if they don't have the ticket, they don't get billed at the town of East Windsor. And we're keeping, we're keeping a copy of every one of those sheets here. We're keeping a list so we know who's going, and there'll be, there'll be a little checks and balance.
Sounds good.
Other questions or comments?
Selectman Norrell here. If someone has to make multiple trips, Len, that's okay?
Like, 20, 20 is okay, if I make 20 trips?
You can do it in four days.
Just thinking of the person that turns this into an entrepreneurial situation.
Well, actually, that's a good question. How long will we be offering this at the, you drop it off at Denali's?
We're offering it up until September 6th.
Okay.
We're giving people plenty of time to do it, and most people just take care of it themselves anyhow. It's just those few that... I mean, if, when you drive around town, which I've done, I mean, there's trees on houses, trees on sheds. Those are going to require a tree company to come in and take care of it, and they're just going to take that whole mess away.
Right.
Actually, Len, be aware of that. Insurance companies are not, in my case especially anyways, they're not paying the tree company to actually remove said tree debris, only to remove it from a structure and cut it up into pieces. My insurance company says they will not pay the amount required to remove trees and brush. That, that's my responsibility. But they will pay a tree company to cut something off of a building and cut it up small enough that it's manageable.
Oh, good to know.
Yeah, actually, that's, I forgot about that, Charlie, when that roof, tree fell on my roof a few years ago. Same thing, the insurance company specifically paid for everything except for the hauling away, and I just worked it out with the tree cutter myself, but only other stuff that was covered.
Well, if, if people can get it curbside, we'll pick it up, whatever it is.
Well, before you say that, Marie, just, I have six large trees that came down in my yard. The insurance company, as stated by Charlie, will pay to take it off all the structures that got damaged at a price of about three grand to do that, and then to haul it away, that's a price of $5,650. So I'm thinking at this point, I might have to utilize you guys to save some money. And I'm sure there'll be other people, once they hear about it, that are going to be in the same boat.
Well, we're here trying to help, so if they can, you know, if anybody that can get it out to the, out to the edge of the road in their front yard, we will pick it up. We're not limiting it. Whatever they happen to put there, we'll pick it up.
I think we'll just have to keep track of it and monitor as we go.
Well, it also has to be very current tree damage. It can't be stuff that, you know, that's been dead in my backyard and I managed to get it out front.
Yeah, it was, last time, there was a fair amount of general cleanup that got swept up with everything else, but... So I think that, yeah, we want to keep an eye on that.
We know, and, and on a side note, is we're East Windsor. We're all pretty resilient. We're all pretty self-sufficient. You know, we'll probably have a lot more bonfires than the fire departments are going to like, but most of us aren't dragging it out of our backyard. They're just going to stack it up and let the leaves fall off it and burn it in their fire pits and, you know. I don't, we're taking care of a big hunk of it now. I mean, you know, half of our population in town owns pickup trucks or has a friend that owns a truck. And we've got four people right now that have called and said, "What do I do with it?" So four people in a week, I don't think is that bad.
Yeah, my concern are twofold. It's those people who don't have any place to get rid of it, and it's those people who don't have any means of getting rid of it. I agree with the sentiment that most people will take care of this themselves, but I just don't, I want to make sure we're not leaving anybody behind.
We won't. I mean, in the October storm, people brought it here. We, we, correct me if I'm wrong, we did not do any curbside pickup.
We paid for somebody to do it. It was, it was an immensely higher volume than what we got out of this one. But we, if you remember correctly, we put it out to bid. It was literally the first thing that Board of Selectmen did after being sworn in, was to figure out how to pay for that. And of course, that was done with the idea in mind. There was money coming to reimburse for that, which I don't think we have that scale of a problem this time, and I don't think that that's an option. So we're on our own, out of our own fund balance for this one.
Well, we have, I've gotten forms today that I have to review, and I have to put a value on what we're doing between our own tree pickup and, and any damages and any overtime and what we've expended. They, they want an idea. We may get some refund back. We may get some money. There was a, which means FEMA, it was approved by the President through FEMA, so depending on the amount of damage and monetary estimates that we come up with, we may get some money back.
That would be, that would be nice. I wouldn't count on it, though.
Other questions or comments on the storm recovery? I would just share, when I was on, in a statewide emergency management call on Thursday evening of last week, the governor set a goal for the state of having all... on Thursday evening of last week, uh, the governor set a goal for the state of having all of the roads in town passable by the end of business on Friday. Um, and our small but mighty road crew had our roads entirely passable by mid afternoon on Thursday. We were thirty hours ahead of the rest of the state. Um, and that really shows the dedication of that group and it's a testament to the, the work that Len and Joe do in, in their department.
And the only reason it took until Thursday after, afternoon was because Eversource never sent anybody to to cut the wires or kill the power on the trees that were down across the roads with wires in them. Or it would have been done Tuesday night before we went home, the day of the storm.
Definitely noticeable. And not only with you guys doing your job, but then I noticed, cause I was driving around more than I wanted to be that few days, but, um, it was just, yeah. Personal, private people just bringing their brush. I mean, everybody was just getting to it and cleaning stuff up so quickly. It's very, I, I was impressed with the resiliency of our, of our population as a whole. We just got down to it and got the job done.
Well, if there's nothing else for Len and Joe, um, if the board is comfortable with that as a plan, that's what we'll do.
I'm also with it.
Sarah, Charlie? Sarah's giving us the
Sounds good.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely.
Uh, the next item of business, uh, was brought to us also by a constituent. Um, I think she's on the call this evening, Anna Rivera. Um, Anna, if you'd like to, to address the board, feel free. I'll introduce it by saying that, um, she reached out to me at the beginning of July, um, and expressed some concerns that East Windsor could be doing more to foster a sense of inclusivity in the community. Um, and so I, I kinda put it back on her and said, what would you have us do? Um, and so she came up with this idea, um, to create a diversity council and she wrote part of the charge that's in your packet. We talked about this in concept at a, um, I think our last meeting. But what's now in front of you is something that we could adopt by vote and actually in panel to have these folks get to work and, and help us make sure that we're putting forward a, a true intention that East Windsor is a, a community for everybody. So Anna, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Not really much to add. I just wanted to say that I was really excited when I spoke to you about it. And I just feel energized and really thankful with the speed that you've gotten this taken care of. So I'm really excited to be about the change that's gonna happen in East Windsor.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Members of the board, any questions or comments for Anna? Sarah?
I'm Sarah Muska Selectman. Um, I'd like to start off by saying I believe a diversity council is a great idea. I am all for encouraging participation from all cultures and backgrounds. Um, I just have a few concerns with some of the verbiage as it stands. Just where it says where, where minorities are being excluded in our current policies. Are there, is that a perception or are there actual policies that actually do have verbiage in there that show discrimination against a person because of their race or because of their gender?
I would first change the verbiage. I relooked at it and instead of saying experiencing exclusion. I would, or, um, being excluded, I would say experiencing inequality. Because, you know, I don't see in, I look at that it's right, it's outright, um, exclusion. I just feel that in, um, in looking at some of the things that are just they go on in the town, I just don't feel that there is an upfront image of the town as being diverse. So a lot of what we see in town and what we experience as minorities, but I mean all minorities, not just racial minorities, I mean, the whole gamut. I just feel that, um, this is an opportunity with this commission to look at what we have now and to identify areas.
Thank you. Um, one other comment. And as far as the input of future town ordinances and policies. As a, you know, a local lobbying and ordinance, I personally don't feel that that should be implemented or based on anyone's gender or race. I feel that that should be for everyone as a, as a whole town, as a body. So I'm just not sure what that verbiage means as far as how it would be affected with town ordinances and policies, what you're looking to actually do in that regard.
We're looking to collaborate and work with. And so when these things are proposed. Like for our committee to just take a look too and attend meetings, um, but just see, is this all inclusive? Would somebody feel like maybe they're not being represented in that? And that can be, you know, it could be economical. It doesn't have to be, um, just race or religion or those types of, like the, the bigger range of what you see as hard races and exclusion and those types of things.
Thank you. That's all that I have.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I would, I guess I would just agree with Sarah on the, the wording of the, the actual charge. It just needs to be worked a little bit, a little bit smoother, I think, cause it, it, it does give the impression that they are being excluded or, or whatever. Um, so I think we just need to tighten up that and I think I'm good with this.
Yeah, I'm excited to do that. Um, it was something that we threw together really quickly.
For sure.
We can certainly go back and relook at it and reword it, take a couple more, more steps at it, just so that it, um, gives a clearer picture of what we're trying to do and what we feel right now is going on.
I was also curious, uh, you know, like what kinds of things would the, the board work on kind of, you know, example wise, like say this, the plantation road, uh, potential renaming? Is, is that something that this commission would, would, you know, kinda take a lead in investigating and giving a recommendation?
So, and I think when I first heard it mentioned in this meeting, I was really excited because that's something that we would definitely like to take a look at. And we would, um, work with everybody, but, um, I'd also like to know myself the history of why it's named Plantation Road. And then work with, um, if it is approved, just work with the, the committee to come up with a new name.
So in, uh, thinking about the speed of government and how quickly things tend to go. I, I thought that I had, that might be a good project for, um, this potential council to work on. In conjunction with the police department, the, the board of education and the town, um, is our annual town meeting. Which is, uh, has to be held in December. The topic that we're hoping to do this year, and this was, uh, the superintendent's suggestion, which, um, is timely. Is to have a, a community conversation on the concept of inherent bias. And in the conversation that Anna and I had, um, when we met face to face. This is a topic that came up and how there, there may be, um, bias in our world, bias in our lives, bias in our government, that we don't even intend to be there, but, but permeates just the same. And I thought that the timing could, could line up such that, um, the council could help launch that as a, a broader conversation than we would typically do in a standard annual meeting, just as an, just as an idea for helping them to get going with a project that they can work on that also meets our charter mandated objectives and, and fits the, the, um, fits the time. So, I mean, there's, there's a, it's most of this is written so broadly so that they can, they can do and make recommendations to us as the policymaking board. For things that they think we should be taking a look at to, to improve and, and make more perfect, uh, are the inclusivity of our community. You know, I mean, it, it was drafted broadly on purpose to give them latitude to be able to grow into the role that they want, they want to see. Marie?
I agree it should be broad, but I als, but I also agree with what Sarah said about some of the language and I appreciate, um, that Ms. Rivera is willing to go ahead, um, and change that a little bit. But perception is everything. And I agree with her, the perception from outsiders. And not from our board, because I believe every one of us and most people that sit on boards and commissions in town currently, um, are not anyway excluding anyone. But I think there's a perception out there where people themselves feel because some of the things that have been said in prior administration that we had, that make them feel like they're not inclusive. So I get it being broad. So I think we gotta find something in the middle. Cause I certainly don't wanna go forward and have people think that we're not open to everybody in our community because we are. So, but thank you for stepping forward and agreeing to, um, do that, cause I believe it's much needed. That's all I got.
Charlie?
Selectman Nordele here. Um, yeah, I think this is great and, and I agree with Sarah and Alan on, on the wordage there in that one section. Cause that kinda struck out to me too. And I, and I know this isn't, it's beginning phases and all, but do we have a sense of other people interested in joining this, um, this council? And I know it states here, you know, five to nine members on, on a four-year term basis. Have you heard from anyone, Anna, in, in regards to that?
I have four people that are excited and ready to go. One of them is, um, she just needs to register to vote. She was not a registered voter, so we need to get that taken care of. Everyone that I've approached has been really excited. Um, they're diverse. Some are Republicans, some are Democrats, some are older, some are younger. I was trying to get just a large group of really diverse people on there as well.
Okay, great. That's, that's excellent.
I've had two people who have contacted my office with interest in participating as well, also from diverse backgrounds. So in terms of next steps. Do you guys want, um, Anna and I to take another stab at the verbiage in the, the first now therefore paragraph? Or do we wanna wordsmith it? Or how do you wanna do this? It'd probably be easiest to shot at, at the now therefore and then brought something back. That we might be able to do by, uh, Thursday next week.
Okay.
That would be great.
You have a different idea?
No, no, I think that's
I'd be good with that as well.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. Anna, do you have some time to reach out by phone sometime tomorrow?
I do.
Yeah, that's fine. Just let me know a good number to call and I'll, um, I'll dial in.
I will send it over.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your leadership on this. Okay, um, our next item is a discussion with RM eighteen, which is the company that owns RM eighteen Holdings, which is the company that owns the, uh, watermill landing development. As the, the board is aware, the town, uh, extended, the town issued a tax abatement to them initially and extended it as one of the very first acts of this board. Um, and they have, um, come to us asking for a second extension. I would invite, um, I guess it's Jim and Jerry, uh, to, to talk with us about where they are and why they need the extension. Uh, and then the board will likely discuss this, uh, in executive session and, um, take actions accordingly. Gentlemen?
Yes, thank you, uh, First Selectmen. This is Jim Jervis, uh, with, with Calmar. And, uh, I'm a director of business development. I, um, took the place of Brent Narkowitz, who unfortunately passed away the first of March. In a tragic accident. And, uh, I came on board, assumed his, uh, role and responsibilities for this project and many more. And I, um, I appreciate the time and consideration, uh, from you folks. We're in the process right now of developing our project. And we unfortunately, as everyone's aware of, ran into COVID. Which caused us delays. And obviously, uh, with Brent's passing, there were some delays attached to that. I came on board in May and so now I am, uh, trying to shore up uh, this particular project and what's happening. So again, I appreciate everyone's consideration. As of August sixth last week, um, we had agreed to spend eleven million, two hundred thousand dollars on this project. As of August sixth, we have spent ninety-two percent of that figure. Ten million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. So we are short right now, a little over nine hundred thousand dollars on our spend. And again, I'd like to, uh, you know, unfortunately attribute that to COVID delays, construction delays related to COVID, Brent's passing. We also had committed to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in personal property, which is F F and E for us. Right now, we've spent a little over a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, which, you know, puts us over about forty-six thousand dollars on this particular project. We believe that we are going to be able to complete this project by October thirtieth of this year. And we will spend far above the eleven million, two hundred thousand dollars, which we committed to spend. So that's where we are and I am requesting from the First Selectmen, an extension until October thirtieth to complete our spend of our commitment of eleven million, two hundred thousand dollars. So again, I appreciate everyone's time and your considerations for this and I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
So I'll open up the questions for the board, but first, Jim, I have two questions. Is your representation that, that construction will be complete by October thirtieth?
Yes, we feel like, um, well, we, we may, may not be completely finished with the project by, by October thirtieth. We'll be pretty well close to being finished, but we feel like we'll certainly have over what we committed to spend in the eleven million, two hundred thousand dollars.
Jim, why don't I hop in also and answer that? This is we will, we'll, we'll exceed the, uh, the required spending in late September, early October, we're asking for that date. We'll be spending about another three million dollars on the, uh, on the project. Our drop dead date on completion of the project is December thirty-first. We expect to have people moving in, in, uh, in, uh, in December or late November, depending upon when, when things get done. So it's in that timeframe, but we, we were just requesting the extension to get us past the, the deadline for how much we're supposed to, we're supposed to spend.
Okay. The numbers that you included in your email, Jim, this is for you, uh, the numbers that you included in your email of August sixth. Is there any, at the, the abatement agreement suggests that there would be third-party verification of those numbers? Do you have any third-party verification substantiating how much has been spent to date?
We could give, we, we could give you draws from the, from the lender that, that's, that's, uh, expended those money. And then receipts on the soft cost, how, whatever you want, we can provide.
Okay. And then lastly, uh, I know that there have been a number of contractors who have pulled their permits. and, and have suspended work at different points in construction, some of them just very recently. What is, what is the driver there and has that circumstance been resolved? And if so, how?
Well, some, some have them have pulled their permits. I mean, in a construction job like this, a number of varieties, a number of things happen, but long and short of it is we are, this job is dragging on way too long. And so we are pressing our contractors to adequately man the jobs to get it done. And if they don't do that, then, then we're supplementing their work or replacing them. Or sometimes they're saying, I can't do that. Go ahead and replace me. And that sometimes causes a shift in.
Those are the, the questions I have. Members of the board? Selectman Baker.
So in the, in your letter, you do mention, and you mentioned today briefly, that you had troubles getting sourcing materials because of COVID and lockdowns and getting your people from New York to here. And so what's changed now and how stable will this theoretical new environment be going forward for getting materials and the needed people onsite? I mean, and so that's part one. And then part two is like, what is your feeling of, I, you know, put a percentage on how optimistic you are on getting done on time, but you know, by the October 30th? And then again, by the drop dead 12/31.
Okay, let, let me address the first one and then I'll address the, the second. The, the issue has been in the last six months has been supply chain. And most of those issues are beginning to be resolved, but they're, they're back, they're back backlog. Let me just give you an example, a couple of examples. There's four companies in the, there's four, really four companies in the nation that provide the bulk of the doors for apartment buildings in the United States. Two of those companies shut down for just under four months, which then created a backlog of doors. They now all opened and they're now producing the capacity. But doors we were supposed to get in, in late June, we're now looking at getting in September. But all of those things are now back on, on track. Some of them, we've had to change what we're doing. And this is an odd thing, but, but vinyl baseboard is almost impossible to get in the United States right now because it all comes from China. And because of all of this, there's been a, a delay in getting that. So we've resourced where that's coming from and now know what our supply chain is. So we're, in terms of meeting your deadline, in turn, in meeting the deadline for the amount of spending, which is about another $90,000, that clearly is going to happen ahead of the October date. We are, we're very optimistic that we will finish the building by the end of the year. That's what the bank's independent examiner also determined, inspected, that comes out every month. That's the date he set for it. And that's really with our lender, that's really a drop dead date. So you're going to see, and that's part of what is the license issue here. You're going to see double crews going in this project, whatever it takes to get it done, to get people moved in. And our goal is to get people moved in before the holidays because people don't like to move in right around the holidays. So our goal is really early December, but our drop dead date is, is the end of the year. But we're, we're optimistic on both of those. This project for, I won't, unless you want to, I won't go into all the details, but it, it has gone on way too long. There were some design issues that we had to do. There were some, some site contractor issues early on in the job that, that caused a lot of work to have to be redone and a bunch of stuff like that. But it's gone on too long. And so it's really one of our companies, we've got, we've got jobs going on right now in 10 states. This finishing, this is our number one priority for the company right now. And so it's a, it's a high priority to get done.
Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Yes, Marie.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to extend my condolences to the loss of your colleague, Brent Narkowitz. I have a quick question. You went a little bit too fast when you were giving the figure that you currently have. It was originally reported as 99, $9,938,000. You were up to $10 million, but did you catch that number?
Yes, let me provide that for you. Through August 6th, we have spent $10,299,588.80 of the $11,200,000 that we committed to spend, which left us as a deficit as of August 6th And then from our personal property expenditure, which we'll term FFNE for furniture, fixtures and equipment, we were committed to spend $150,000. And as of August 6th, we've spent $196,288.80, which puts us over from the personal property approximately $46,268.80. So did that, did that answer your question? For all intents and purposes, yeah, we're a little over, we've, we've spent 92% of what we guaranteed to spend through August 6th.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other questions for us at Calmar? You know, we're really excited to be a part of the community. You know, as some of you may know, but some of you may not know, we not only build, manage, we actually own these properties too. And the very first one we built, which is near our corporate headquarters in Western New York, we still own. We own all of these. So we're not building it for someone else. We build it for our company to own and manage. So we're really looking to be good long-term neighbors and to provide a service of quality, active 55 and over lifestyle apartment community. I really appreciate your consideration and so does Jerry.
Other questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to table this to be taken up after our executive session this evening.
I'll make the.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Make the motion that we table this until after our executive session.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Marie. Any discussion from members of the board? Seeing none, the question is on tabling this item until later. Selectman Baker. Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
We will table this and take it up before the conclusion of our meeting. Gentlemen, we're going to ultimately throw you out when we go into executive session. If you'd like, we can circle back in the morning and I can let you know what the board decides. Okay, then we could do that.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And if you have any additional questions or anything you'd like to discuss, please feel free to email me or Jerry and we'll be happy to provide you any information that you need. We really appreciate your consideration here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so next discussion of a, a project for a potential tax abatement with Jerry Wilcox. Jerry emailed me at seven o'clock indicating that he had a conflict and wouldn't be able to attend tonight's meeting. So I guess we could park that. The next item is discussion of charter revision proposals. So here's where we are with this. We were supposed to have this meeting last Thursday. That obviously didn't happen for obvious reasons. We are also required to complete this process by September 3rd is when all of the ballot questions need to be finalized and submitted to the Secretary of State. And this is going to apply to another item we'll discuss in executive session as well. So working backwards from there, the statute requires that we have a properly noticed public hearing as part of our process. This was going to be our second properly noticed public hearing if it were held last week and it was, and we didn't get wind gusted out. We don't have enough time now to, to notice a new public hearing and meet that deadline. We have, as you all know, extended the opportunity to accept written testimony through, I think it was six o'clock on August 6th. I did include the piece of written testimony that we had in, that, that I had submitted to me. It's included in your packet. So I, we could potentially have another public hearing on the 18th and schedule a special meeting on the 18th and have the Charter Revision Commission meet on the 18th in order for us to do all of the, the things that the statutory process will require us to do. We are not required to do that. So I would leave it to you to let me know if you want to go that route or if you want to acknowledge that we have done the, the, what is required per statute and actually a bit more. Or if we, if there are people on the call tonight who wanted to opine on the question, we could open up the discussion informally, but it wouldn't constitute a, a formal public hearing. So that's kind of where we are on this. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to discuss it a little bit and, you know, we could take input, I think, from anybody that's on the call that has input to make. And then, yeah, either way it works for me as far as proceeding after that, I think. More input, the better as always, but we do need to watch the time.
Selectman Nordell here. I agree with Alan, but for the most part, I think we've heard what we're going to hear.
Sarah, Marie.
Sarah Muska Selectman. Given that we had to postpone our meeting last, from last week to tonight and didn't have the public hearing and given that there is also a Board of Education meeting tonight that a lot of people might be attending. And given that we aren't meeting in person, I would be in favor of hosting another public hearing to get more input from the public. So I would be in favor of doing that on the 18th. I feel the more input we receive, the better.
Marie.
Yeah, I agree with Sarah. I'm just, when we say we're going to do something, I, I feel we should go forward. And we did say we were going to provide a second public hearing. We also said that, you know, you could send in your written documentation if you wanted to, but some people are reluctant to put things in writing. So I would like to see us go forward on the 18th and not only for the public, but for myself. The biggest concern and things that I'm hearing is in regards to the elimination of the 2% and the three votes and then goes back to the Board of Finance. And I'm going back and forth myself on that. So I think if nobody else has any objections, maybe we should do that on the 18th just to give it one last hurrah and then be prepared to make a final decision ourselves that evening.
I, I agree with that sentiment. I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we have to do it on the 18th because by the time we get the notice submitted tomorrow, that's the soonest we can do it. And because of when the submission requirements are in, basically we have one day to do it. And it is the 18th and that is the only day we can do it. So we'll need to work with the members of the Charter Revision Commission to allow us to hold a public hearing, close the public hearing, conduct a selectmen's meeting with that as the only topic. And then close the selectmen's meeting and then them open up a Charter Revision Commission meeting to, to consider the recommendation from our board back to them. That is what the process by charter and calendar has to be. And it, we just got hit by an act of God, which screwed up the process a bit here. And I feel badly about that because the, the commission was asked to do a year and a half's worth of work in eight months and are on pace to have done that except but for an act of God. So okay, so I'll, I'll work on that tomorrow too. We'll make sure that gets noticed first thing. And then I'll notice both the special selectmen's meeting and with the, the acquiescence of the chairman of the Charter Revision Commission, I'll, I'll notice theirs as well.
Thanks, Trey.
He's nodding, so I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and do that.
Thanks, Jason.
Obviously we have to make our recommendation and I don't know, do we, did we want to discuss it at all tonight? Well, obviously I kind of do, but, or leave it all for the 18th. And if, I guess, I'll just continue, like, I certainly, after thinking about this a lot, I've decided like, there's no way I can support the recommendation to do the Board of Finance finishing off the vote kind of thing. I just think that, you know, we just went through that. The town was forced to have the Board of Finance take the, the, you know, take it into their own hands and finish the budget and absolutely like probably zero people like that. Nobody wanted that, including the Board of Finance. And I think as much as we'd like to hate the 2%, to me it's a, it's a fail safe. And it works in both directions for both people who want to increase the budget and for people who want to decrease the budget or keep it as low as possible. So I think people want to go higher than that or lower than that. They need to get their voters out to get it done and that's how democracy is done. And that's hard sometimes and not what, you don't get the result you want, but that's how we do it here. And so I think that we should look at potentially adjusting that 2% to something that's more reasonable that would cover the costs. I mean, I mean, it's just obvious and a fact that generally prices are going up all the time and costs are going up all the time and, and the things that you need to invest in will get to CIP in a little while, right? Just start getting invested in and so I think maybe we ought to look at adjusting that. I don't know exactly where it should be, but I can't, I can't even, I, I would have to vote no for the current proposal. So I think we need something else that I would like to, that, that I could support or if not, then I, that's just where I would be. That's kind of where I'm at. And I know I've talked to, I've talked to actually a lot of people. I've talked to most of the board. I tried to get to you, Sarah, but this whole thing, then, you know, that you, you were out with power and then I went on vacation. So I didn't get to you, but I talked to everybody else on the board. And I just talked to other people in town government, people that I called for advice on things that I called, you know, Republicans and Democrats that I'm friends with and people that are unaffiliated. And typically any tough question, I just kind of get a input from everybody and every single person is against doing what we're, what is proposed at this point in time. And pretty much everyone's open to the idea of adjusting the 2% to something. Or if anybody had a better idea. I know this is a really hard question. It's, it's, we didn't solve it. We haven't solved it ever since we put it in. So it is hard and, and, but I think, I think we, we, I would rather put something in there that I can support and have it fail than rather than just, I'm not supporting what you're, what you're doing. So I'm hoping we can like, just kind of work it out from here.
So in terms of the context of the special meeting and this being on our agenda, we are well within our rights to discuss it. So that was a question you started your, your talk with, and I just want to affirm that yes, we can do that. We're not going to, we're not going to take any action, but it's, it's wholly appropriate for the board to have this discussion prior to us taking action on, on what will now be the 18th. I don't disagree with the things that, that you said at all. You know, I think that there is a, a real perception that Governor Lamont's order took people's say away in the budget process this year. And there is a connection being drawn between that executive order and what the proposal is. So if we, if we want to be representative of our constituency, the things that, that we're hearing, I'm hearing them too, are that the proposal that they put in, in, that the CRC has put forward, isn't going to sit well with voters. And so we have a very limited time to. And so, we have a very limited time to figure out what would. And I think that that adjustment, recognizing that the world is changing, may be more appropriate than perceived wholesale change in, in the process that we use.
Sarah Muska Selectman. I'd like to say that I am basically where Selectman Baker is as well. I am a big advocate for voter rights and hearing from the public input that we have received, this is something that they are not in favor of. And that is something that the previous board did not take into consideration was the public input that they were receiving. So, that is something that I am looking at, too. I think that having three referendums and then having the Board of Finance have the ultimate say, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't make sense to me. Why would people just continue to come vote if their voice isn't heard? So, I am where Selectman Baker is. I'd like to see it at a different percentage. I know that the Charter Revision Commission did talk about this extensively. I do appreciate the work that they have done, and I know they went back and forth with this, but I, I'm not really in favor of putting it forward the way it is either. So, that's where I am as well.
Marie?
Yeah. I'm not in disagreement with what the other two selectmen have said, but where I have an issue, I don't think we've done a good enough job in this town over the last several years to let the public know and make them aware of how we've done things to save them money. And I'll use Melissa Mottesi as my first example. We used to have somebody in charge of the senior center, somebody in charge of parking wreck, somebody in charge of human services. And now, that function has been consolidated and we have one person, thus saving two management jobs in town. We have a outstanding Public Works Department that have, I believe, seven crew people. Where towns in the, surrounding us have 20, 26 people. And our people, because of their work ethics that we currently have in this town, we're saving money for our town people. So, to put a 2% or a 3% budget cap is where I have a problem. I understand the sentiment from the public and not wanting to have the Board of Selectmen take away the right to vote. I get that, because I did that when I was on the Board of Finance. I made executive decision in order to meet the budget deadline so that we weren't shutting down the town. And the first person that approached me in the parking lot said, "Thank you for taking my, right away from me the vote," and the man was in tears. Don't want anybody to ever have to experience that and then the person that's done that experienced that. But my problem is, we don't have any control once contracts are done in town with everyone. And I'm a firm believer that you should get paid for the job that you're doing. And our staff should be paid for the job that they're doing. And that's not always going to be 2%. We know that. So, we have to come up with some mechanism, whether that's the Growth National Growth Index that we use, do we take the town charter and have them take a look at, well, can we make certain contractual obligations and insurance premium increases exempt from that And find some hybrid approach, seems to be the new word that we're using these days, in order to accomplish what we need to move the town forward. Because we're not moving the town forward. We are, currently, things are happening, but we need to do more. And we can't do that if we're not willing to recognize what we've done to save money on top of that. So, I would like to do something like that, if that's legally possible to do. But the 2% isn't gonna work and the 3% is just another stab at putting something out there. I want something that's actually gonna work for the benefit of the community. So, that's where I'm struggling with. And I'm not disagreeing with anybody else's saying, we all have our own opinion, but people don't want their taxes going up. I don't want my taxes going up, but I also don't want to lose what I have. And if going up with the taxes is gonna maintain what I currently have, then sometimes you have to do that, because I certainly don't want to keep losing, losing, and losing. And that's where we've been over the last few years, is we're losing, we're losing, we're losing. So, that's all I have to say.
Charlie, I don't think we've heard from you yet.
Yep, I gotta, I've gotta speak now. And I agree with everyone. I agree with Alan, I agree with Marie and Sarah. You know, I, I don't want to take away people's right to vote. And I certainly know for sure that, you know, 2% has not been working for us. Marie's right. It's just a fictional number thrown out there years ago. And if we throw 3% out there, that could be what they say was the fictional number we threw out there in 10 years from now. I really think our system is flawed in the whole referendum process to begin with. We never know why the people are voting yes or no. If we had some way of determining why people voted yes, why people voted no, it would give our Board of Finance a better step to work on the next time they set the referendum. Right now, they're just taking a stab in the dark. They're automatically assuming in most cases in history that it's too high. They set a number too high. They set a number too high. So, they go lower. And that continues and continues. And then, in some cases, even we've been below 2% and the people still voted no. You know, the townspeople are a little brainwashed with the 2% as well. So, I, I think the system altogether needs maybe to be looked at. And at this point, we, we probably don't have time for that, to revamp the whole thing, to, to, to get rid of that. And we're probably gonna end up putting a Band-Aid on this again. But, you know, Alan's point to me was, well, you know, what if we were to get, you know, a, a bad set of Board of Finance people and they went, you know, they cut the budget down to minus 3%? And, and then where would the town be? Well, I don't, I don't know that we would get that many people on the board all at once voted in, because you remember, these people are voted in by the public, you know, and, and people do pay quite a bit of attention to voting those people in, I think. And I, I just can't see us having a Board of Finance that we couldn't trust to make that final decision. So, that's where I kind of, you know, liked what the Charter Revision Commission had put forward, because, you know, those were elected officials as well. And if we can't make a decision after three referendums as voters, well, then maybe it's time to pass the flag on to someone else to make it. At the end of the referendum, the public has the opportunity to go in front of the Board of Finance and tell them why they didn't vote. But, you know, as we know, we don't get the participation. So, you know, I think the system as, as a whole is just, there's somewhere we're, we're missing something big and, and that's what needs to be fixed.
Very well said. Any other questions or comments on this for this evening?
I guess I would just add, and I don't know if Nicole or Rebecca wants to, you know, chime in with any of their thoughts or, but just to kind of reiterate, for me, as much as we dislike the, the 2% or whatever percentage it is, it's, it is a failsafe. And, and the way to get things done, whether you want to spend more or spend less, is to bring out your voters. And, and so, that's the key and, and that's never gonna change, hopefully. So, the, I, I, the way I see the, the cap is, is it's simply a failsafe. It's not the default. It's a failsafe and we should be, you know, I'm sure a lot of us endeavor to do more or, or less, whatever. But anyway, those people, whoever shows up at, at the polls, those are the ones that are deciding. And if, and if it has been where it's, you know, 2% and that's insignificant and it's too often 2%, well, that's the people that are voting and that's what they've decided. And, and so, to change that, you need people to vote the way you want them to vote. So, the other things that we do or want to do, they never work out math-wise. If you use CPI or any of these other things, they, they fluctuate too much. They're, they're, they're just not reliable indicators. And one of the things, you know, I'm always going back to my first term, but I had CCM give us a research on the mill rates for just basically all the towns around us and, you know, more in line with towns that have access to 91 and have kind of the same rural urban mix that we do, but, you know, not, not our peers that we, that we, you know, demographically, per se. But anyway, then I took that information and I can't find it, but I graphed it and, and of course, it would need to be updated, but what it showed was, you know, Windsor kind of had a steady incline, a little dip here or there, and then all the rest of the towns were back and forth. Like, you'd have a sharp up, sharp down, maybe a couple of flat years, but like, you know, you can get a flat year or two and then you watch if, if anybody's paying attention, that town, it's a big spike the following year because they just put off stuff that needed to be done. So, when you're in business, which you always hear from business people, and I'm no tycoon, but they want predictability, right? They want to know what's gonna happen in the future so I can make a business plan five, 10 years out. If I know that East Windsor's not gonna go squarely in either direction, that's kind of a good thing, right? And, and so, that's the way I look at it from, you know, how do I grow the commercial grand list? How do I make them feel comfortable with East Windsor? When they know there's this failsafe and this is how it's been, this is how it's worked out in practice, something that I can look ahead 10 years and give you a basic idea what I'm gonna be paying for taxes. But I think that's, I think there's value in that to, to the business community. I could be wrong. I would love somebody that, like, has a lot more knowledge in this to tell me if I'm right or wrong there, but...
Rebecca, Nicole, Tom, do you guys have anything you want to?
I mean, I would definitely agree with everybody on everything that everybody has said. This is definitely not been easy. We have looked at so many different scenarios and nothing was pretty imperfect. So, we kind of picked almost a hybrid approach to try to get some resolution. But to the same part of it, that 2% was just a number pulled out of the air however many years ago it was. And whatever number we pick now is basically gonna be the same thing except the higher number, because we realized 2% isn't enough. So, I think one of the main questions is that if we do a percentage, are we gonna keep the CIP and that services in there? Because they're the ones that are really affected by the 2% in terms of benefiting the town for things that they need to do on a day-to-day basis. So, I think if that was the case, I would probably lean towards doing a percentage, pick a number, pick five, I don't care, but don't include the CIP and that services. That way, they can still get the things done that they need to get done on a year-to-year basis. But I do agree that the, having some kind of end cap of regardless of what the vote is by the end of it, say it'll go to a 5% increase, that's, that's fine. So, yeah, let me know how this will all work out for next week, Jason.
So, what, what the statute requires is that we either accept your draft report as your final report or make specific recommendations back to you as to what your, what we think you ought to reconsider. So, this board, based on our deliberations on, oh, we just lost somebody. This, this board will, will provide a roadmap for you and you guys can either accept it or forward back what you think you ought to be doing. And when we then decide on Thursday, the 20th, we'll accept your draft report and forward it to the voters or we'll accept your draft report and we're all done. You know, that is, that is something, and we have done that before. The Board of Selectmen, two revisions ago, accepted the final report from the Charter Revision Commission and opted not to forward it onto the voters and keep the status quo.
Okay.
So, that's what the process will be. And most of that will happen on the 20th. The final part of it, where the board will either accept your final report and forward it or accept your final report and table it, that decision will happen on the 20th.
Okay. And that'll be during your regular Board of Selectmen meeting, but on Tuesday, the 18th, you would have it so that Board of Selectmen holds a public hearing, Board of Selectmen holds a Board of Selectmen meeting, talk about just the charter, and then the Charter Revision will hold their meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
And that keeps everything in line with what the statutory requirements are.
Okay.
Other questions or comments on this topic? We've got two more lively discussions on it coming up in the next nine days, so. All right. Thank you very much. Rebecca, you've done, you and your team have done a great job. Thank you for squeezing this a very abbreviated period of time.
I will pass that message along to everybody. Thank you.
Yes, definitely.
Hate disagreeing with all your hard work, but it's just the way we gotta do things sometimes, right?
It wasn't, it was not a full agreement on our side either, so we had questions on it, as you guys know.
Next up, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Towers to join us for this conversation. Next up is a discussion on the CIP recommendations, speaking of budget constraints. They have done their work. They've put together a memo with recommendations, the Board of Selectmen, as is required per charter. And then, now it's on us to review their proposal and either vote to accept it or make any changes that we would like to make. Specific questions to the recommendations, I'd ask Mr. Towers to, to be the one to field those. Most of this happened, most of the work that they, they have done happened prior to this board being elected or sat. So, Bill has the most seniority here when it comes to this recommendation. Any questions or comments on what they put in front of us? It's, it was a little confusing, for me, anyway. It was confusing the format with which they provided it. But it's Table 1, that is what their recommendations are for capital projects. Table 2 and Table 3 speak to other things, things that they are recommending for the future or that they wish they could have done. But their actual recommendation for capital investments for this FY 2021 budget is Table 1.
Yeah, so Table 1, we allocated $920,000 to be funded through the CIP projects. And we really worked with a lot of the departments, you know, Public Works and the Fire Department. We, you know, Public Works really did a lot on giving some money up in certain places to get other projects done. So, I thank Lenny and his team for that. And the other two are just reduced or unfunded things that we just can't get done for this year. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to help you.
Any questions or comments from members of the board? Sarah?
Sarah Muska Selectman. The one thing that I was a little disappointed about not being included was the Dog Pound. Seeing that is something that we seem to discuss every single year. The previous board tried to relocate us, regionalize us. We, you know, kind of said we were gonna invest and, and kind of revamp it, I thought, and then that's just being pushed off again to another year, passing it, kicking the can down the road. So, that's one thing that I was a little disappointed to see that we weren't putting something towards. But other than that, I appreciate all the work that they've done. I did follow mostly all their meetings and I do thank them for their work.
Other questions or comments?
I think Marie's got her hand up.
Oh, I saw you unmute. Marie?
Yeah. This is CIP Commission. Appreciate all the work that they've done, but I think when you look at this submission and we marry it with that 2% budget constraints, this is a perfect example. What we have here is necessary and ongoing continual projects year after year after year that we have to put through CIP. Therefore, there's never any room, well, I shouldn't say never, there is some room, but there isn't any room for CIP to take a project and stick it into CIP, because they're always gotta keep that percentage in their mind whether or not the town's gonna be able to afford it. And I'm not sure if public work should always be in the CIP for ongoing road repairs. I don't know if that's a mandatory thing or if that's something that previous, uh, boards have just done, um.
So they get money from, for roadworks and they're, they're on the call if they want to chime in. But they get money for road projects from a couple of different sources. There is appropriation for it. Um, it's, so it's in our operating budget. There is, uh, the CIP funding and they also get money from Towny Road, which is a non-general fund revenue source. And that, I think, and if Leonard or Joe are on, they can correct me. But I think the reason that we do put them in CIP is because we don't fund them enough out of an operational perspective.
Correct. But that's the point I'm making. We should be, we could have every department being funded to the best of the town's ability for each year and we're not doing that.
Joe, is there, uh, is there anything that I, I misstated there you want to correct?
No, uh, basically, CIP is how we pave our roads. That's it. So it's just road pavement. It's, we could move it into our regular budget, but, um, you guys would not be happy. So it goes to CIP. And the other half of the team had to go to bed already. Cheers.
Oh my God.
Well, at least I didn't make an old joke.
Yes, you did. And then you did. Okay. Uh, any other questions on the CIP proposal?
I'm actually, I'd just add that it's just mind boggling how much, like, you know, you look at what we need to bond. We're like six billion, basically. I mean, six million, excuse me.
You made me go digging quick.
Uh, we, we got to do something about that because that number just keeps growing and, and so, you know, I don't know if we can panel another, uh, Charter Commission next year or the year after to look specifically at that issue. Uh, I don't know, but like, we've got to do something there because that cap is, is killing us in the ability to bond for projects that rightfully should be bonded for. And, 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 you know, these are, this is a pretty basic way of how, you know, if you take a town to your own personal household, you, you know, you, you need some capital improvement done, you use your line, you do it, you get it done, you pay it off. And, and it works, uh, because it's a long-term investment. And, and I think we should be doing that here. It, and, I mean, we just have things that are like, we're, we're going to be forced to do something about those roofs. Uh, it's just going to happen. And, and then it's going to be at a time that is none of our choosing and it's not going to be good. But so we got to come to, that's another one of the big rocks I think we have to move is, is fixing that.
So the, the two, the two issues tied together, the, the current 2% cap is directly related to our inability to bond. Our bond capacity is something like $214 million. I'm sorry, it's like, it's $120 million. Our actual bond indebtedness right now is 14 million. The reason that we can't access the rest of that capacity is because we don't have any room in debt service to pay the annual costs. That's because our budget isn't big enough to carry additional debt service. We have the, that, so we have the, the credit score, but we don't have any room on the credit card. To bring it back to, you know, I just bought a car. So to bring it back to very personal levels, I mean, you have the score, but you don't have the ability.
Selectmen, okay, yeah, I couldn't agree more with Alan, you know, and Marie. It's, it's every year these, these projects keep getting kicked down the curve, kicked down the road. And then, then they're, they're a big mess or, or there's something we have to do and then they cost us twice as much. It's a shame that this is how we, we go and, um, I, I just wish more residents were aware of this. And when voting, they, they understood this is the situation we're in because of 2%.
That wasn't really fully clear to me either, that like, I couldn't understand why we, we weren't bonding more. And, and it wasn't clear to me that that was, that is the one issue. And it seems like that's something that needs addressing.
Well, that's why during the budget process, it's always so important to keep the, the debt service budget line at, at 2% and not, not cut that. Because if you cut that, you can't ever replace that. And if you can't ever replace that, it doesn't matter how much, uh, bonding capacity you have, you'll never be able to, to pay your annual note. It's, it's a circle that just keeps perpetuating. And it's just a slow downward spiral to the points you guys are all making. But our, our charge tonight, it, it pertinent to this, is to either accept the recommendations of the, of the CIP or to amend them, but we got to do something. And, and I think they've spent, I got to tell you, they have spent a lot of time, um, putting together this recommendation. I think that, um, even in the memorandum that it's attached to, it's pretty clear that they don't love it, but this really is the best recommendation that they could put in front of us. So I would encourage acceptance of their, of their, uh, recommendation.
I think they've done a fantastic job. I would agree with that. They've, and they do that perennially. Every year they do the best they possibly can for the town and then we send it back less than they need. And the list of unfunded stuff grows and grows and grows. But, but yeah, they're doing it the right way. And I think for me, I'm, I'm right there with them.
So is there a, a motion to accept the recommendation from the CIP Commission? CIP Committee, I misspoke.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations, um, for the fiscal year 21 CIP projects as represented.
Second.
Is there a second? Second is moved by Marie, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Uh, Selectmen Norrell.
Hi.
Blackman Musco.
Hi.
Blackman D'Souza.
Hi.
Blackman Baker.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Jason, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Sarah brought up the Dog Pound. Was, was that money ever budgeted to make those corrections? And if it was budgeted, is it still there?
Uh, I don't believe it ever was budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
There were discussions that were happening with two other towns for a regional approach. And, uh, they completely ghosted on me. And, and just basically, I'll quite honestly stop returning phone calls on the topic. So that's, that's where that fell off. But, um, the chief and the, one of the ACOs and I were just having a conversation during one of those storm days about kind of restarting that and trying to, in a different direct. So it was a casual conversation. I wouldn't say that that's be, become a formal conversation again at this point, but we all know that it's still on the, the radar.
Okay.
So our next thing, our RFI discussion, Joe, are you still here?
Yep.
I'm, um, getting myself, I'm trying to dig out my notes. And, um, okay, so the way, the way that I have structured conversations about energy in day-to-day conversations that the town has, whether it be about procurement of electricity, whether it be about, um, potential citing of solar projects, is I bring together the same team for all conversations, so that everybody who's on town staff that participates in one of the types of conversations about energy participates in all of them. So that, uh, there is no information or communication breakdown. Everybody knows everything that's going on so that we can all hopefully be contributing to making, um, an informed policy determination. We are now about 16 months away from the end of our current power purchase agreement, which we have through CCM's preferred vendor, who's called Titan Energy. And that has locked us in for a five-year period at a rate of, Joe, help me out, 14 cents a kilowatt hour?
Yes.
Okay. Based on the, the time it takes to do solicitation for, for proposals for other PPAs, we want to start now, making sure that we, we advertise this and can secure, um, access to a power purchase agreement while somebody might be coming online for, um, energy generation so that we can partner with them from the outset, which makes us potentially have a more competitive per kilowatt hour rate than we would have otherwise. There are a couple of things that, that, so, so a few weeks ago, Len, Joe, Helen, uh, and I, uh, had a conversation with Lee Hoffman from Pullman and Comley, who is an expert in this field. Typically, he's representing those solar companies that are looking to do business in East Windsor and pretty much anywhere else in the state. In this case, we reached out to him to talk about what he could do from, um, for us in terms of doing a power purchase RFQ. Um, and RFQ is a request for qualifications and RFI is a request for interests. So what we're going to do basically is suggest that the town is interested in a company to sell us energy. Who's out there? What do you got? What, what can we do to get the best rate that we can? Just bear with me one second. I'm, I'm going through my days here. Green skies, finance, here we go. So there are a couple of options. We could do, uh, we could do a request for qualifications for companies that are deal, dealing renewable only generation. So it's a very green model. It's, you know, green, clean, 21st century, may not necessarily be the lowest per kilowatt hour that we could get, but it's probably not far off. We could do, um, a conventional RFQ, which is basically, we're looking for straight up the cheapest energy we can get. We don't care if that's renewables or conventional generation. We're not, we're not interested in the specifics, just get our price down as low as you can. We could do kind of a hybrid between those things, which is to actually do a, a scoring system based on the responses that we get with renewables being a consideration, cost being a consideration, locally owned or Connecticut owned being a consideration, whatever we develop as that scoring criteria and then wait the responses based on those metrics that we determine are important. So that, those are the first things, the, the first three things that I want to talk about with you guys is, do we want to be making a, a policy affirmative, um, statement and saying we're going to go all renewables? Are we looking for just the, the pure basis, basic lowest cost that we can get? Or do we want to do something kind of in between there? And that's a, before we take the next step in terms of issuing this RFQ or RFI, I need that policy answer from the board to, so that we can inform the attorney what it is we're seeking. So, Joe, did I cover the, the basics from those three, the first part of that conversation?
Yep, yeah.
Okay. And you guys gathered that there is a part two of this coming. But part, it's a separate and unrelated question. So the first thing is, what do you want to do? All renewables, cheapest we can get, or wait it out? Marie, you're muted.
Yep. I think we should wait it out.
Okay.
I think I agree with Marie on that. I think a kind of a little bit of diversity there, right? It'd be good.
But I say that only because it's all new. You know, programs are out there, new things are changing every day with the renewable energy. Um, and I want to be able to know that what we're doing isn't going to put us in a box three, four years down the road.
Well, so it's funny you should say that because one of those things that we're going to have to be clear about is the, the length of the term. We'll get a better rate if we lock in for a longer period of time. We'll get a worse rate if we lock in, uh, for a shorter period of time. And that's just the nature of that industry because when, uh, so let's say it's a, a solar development as an example. When solar comes online, they've got a lifespan of 30, 35, somewhere around 35 years. They're not interested in somebody who is, uh, going to be purchasing energy from them for five years because then they've got 25 more that they need to worry about. They're interested in somebody who's going to say, I'm in for 20. And then at that point in time, you start replacing your, your project. So, um, one of the things that we'll have to, uh, wait out in the, the RFI is the, the term.
And if you go renewable, you're going to get a better rate over the longer, long span because you're never going to get a long contract with, uh, fossil fuels.
And that's what I was going to ask is what projects are even coming online or planned that aren't green or renewable? I mean, it's like, not like somebody's going to build a coal plant really at this point in time, right?
Uh, no, but Millstone is still out there. You could buy, you could buy straight from EverSource. That's, it doesn't need to necessarily be coming online. It needs to be available when our current PPA expires. The, the reason for the advanced lead time is in case we wanted to capture one of those projects that's just coming online for a longer term. You can buy conventional energy on the market now. And, and that's quite honestly what we've always done. And what we've done, at least recently, uh, recently is I'll say the last five years, we just had CCM do all the work for us and say, we'll take the cheapest you got. All done. And what we're trying to do here is be a little bit more socially conscious and also make sure that CCM is in fact the lowest deal around and, and certainly they could bid on it. But that, you know, if there's an opportunity for us to do something at a, a lower per kilowatt hour than going with somebody who's got a blanket statewide contract, then we should do that, or at least look at it.
So you think that if we went green for a long term, we could get a, a good low rate locked in? Or do you think that even green is going to get to be eventually lower kilowatt hours in 10, 15 years?
Ooh, um, that's not the direction I thought you were going with that. I thought you were, uh, going to say if it was going to go higher over time. Yeah, you know, I mean, we, we don't know, but we could, we can throw it out to the market and see what happens.
Traditionally, you'll get a smaller rate increase per year. So the, you know, so let's just say in the contract we're in now, it might've been, and, and I don't have it with me, it might've been at a half a cent or five cent increase through the five years to get us to the 14. With green, it's a much slower increase. It's a much slower percentage per year, you know, to cover their profit margins. Because obviously they're all in business to make money. That, you know, I mean, what kills us a lot is the, uh, delivery and the service charges are, it, it's more than electricity at this point, what we pay.
Squeeze them on one side and they get you on the other.
Right.
The other industry.
So Sarah and Charlie, do you have a, an opinion on the renewable versus conventional versus blend it? No?
I, I don't really, um, I think, you know, a blended is a better choice. I don't think putting your eggs all in one basket is necessarily the best option, especially since like, you know, Murray says, you know, renewables, pretty new. You know, the, the green route is not as well-known. So, you know, it scares me to say, okay, well, you know, despite the fact that we're welcoming all these solar, plants into, into town and welcoming them, and I'd love to do business with them. At the same time, it's, it's a big unknown.
Sarah Musco Selectman, I agree with everything that all the previous selectmen said. So I agree with Marie as far as weighing it out and that would be fine with me.
Well, that's easy. So the next thing is how we go about doing it. Um, and I have three options here. So again, Attorney Hoffman from Pullman and Comley is an expert in the industry. Truly understands this stuff in a very, at a very high level. He's, he's a good asset to have. So we can ask him to craft this RFQ for us. Do, do it out like, like you would typically see if you were going out into the market for this. And then we can review the responses, we being And then we can review the responses, we being town staff or we being the Board of Selectmen or whatever your preferences can, can review the solicitations. Some of this stuff is pretty in the weeds in terms of policy and, and complexity. Alternatively, and this, this is because Attorney Hoffman has a number of customer or clients rather in this space, he will avoid a conflict. We could, as part of the RFQ, we could essentially blind them so that there is a number assigned to each applicant that is not shared with Attorney Hoffman and have him review the solicitations based on the, the blind review so that he's not in a, a position of professional conflict and then make a recommendation to us based on what he's seen from that, that blind review. That's option two. And that takes some of the onus off of us about having to understand that, that policy complexity. Option three is that we, we effectively contract with Attorney Hoffman for all of the management costs associated with energy procurement. We build the, the, it, it would be separate and apart from our engagement with Pullman and Comley. We build the costs of him doing that into the savings that we achieve in the energy costs. And he handles the whole thing. He handles the, the drafting of the RFP, he handles the solicitation, he handles the review and the award and the administration of it going forward. So that's option three, which is basically hire him as an energy consultant. Those are the, the three options that we've come up with in terms of how to handle this next step. Personally, I'm comfortable with any of those three. Joe, do you have an opinion on, on one over the others?
No. No, I mean, after, after being part of that conversation, I mean, he has my trust 100%. I mean, I I would let him handle it soup to nuts personally. I think we'll get the best deal.
You guys have an opinion on those three options?
Well, I already feel like I don't know enough about this. I said blended, but then I thought maybe, you know, I really want to be green, but like, you know, I want, I want what's best for the town in the long run and, and really he's going to know that more than us trying to figure it out or, you know, get my head around it. So I guess I would kind of agree to hire an energy consultant that has, you know, a huge reputation and getting this kind of stuff done probably makes some sense.
Anybody else? Marie?
Yeah, I would agree with Alan to hire, go with the number three option and hire him to do that. But with that said, what are we talking for fee? Do you know what it's going to cost us?
I don't even know if he'll be able to do that. He has to run it past his managing partner first to see if, if there's pushback from his employer. But I got the sense that that wouldn't be a problem. I can find out what the, what the fees are and over what period of time we'd be responsible for shouldering them and what the, the delta savings would be to the town. We could ask those questions and then either come back or with your, with your acquiescence move forward.
And realize now that we pay CCM for doing that for us. And I believe it's a monthly charge of about 100 and I want to say about $125, $127 for providing us that service. So there's a cost no matter who does it.
Okay.
And my opinion would be stay all green. Hit Mads.
Sarah Muska Selectman, I'd rather know the answers to those questions before making a decision as far as, you know, the fee, if it's even feasible with his employer and the, the timeframe. So I wouldn't be comfortable making a decision without those answers.
I can hear those.
Jay, Marie has something to say.
Oh, I, I can't see Marie. She's, there's a light behind her that is blocking her out.
Cut it off, I'm sorry. I made it brighter. Hold on. Is that better? Oh, wrong one. Hold on.
Now she's going to be in the dark.
Marie, it's fine, it's fine. Just speak up when you have something to say.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Will he give us that information if we don't pass a motion to do an option tonight?
Yeah.
Because if you do an option and you can't do it, then we're no better off than we are now.
Yeah. So first of all, he already works for us in, in his capacity as an attorney. So he'll facilitate answers to our questions. He's not going to do the work per se, but he'll, you know, we can have a conversation. Looks to me though, that the consensus from you guys, and now that you know the second question, if you want to revisit the first, we can do that. But the, the consensus for the first question about all renewables versus lowest price versus a blend, you guys seem to, from a consensus perspective, want to go with the blend approach. If that's still true, then I can give him that direction. And in either of the three options in terms of the actual solicitation, Lee's going to be involved at least in the drafting. So is, am I, am I representing that correctly? Am I correct here?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So the outstanding question is that before we decide which of the three courses that, one of which he'll be working on is you want the answer to those couple of questions. Is he even allowed to do it? What would the cost be for them to do it? And how long would, would we be paying the cost? Are those the questions we want answers to?
Yep.
Okay, that's easy. I, I can probably have that back to us. I'm, I'm not going to commit to, but I would expect we'd be able to take that up again next Thursday.
Okay. Next Thursday, the 21st?
Yep.
That's our next quarter selectman?
Well, now our next one is going to be the 18th and then it'll be the
And then Thursday to 20th, okay.
Really getting the like hanging out with you guys.
It was nice to see you guys in person, like wow. Alan, you're taller than I remember.
Alan, I'm just mistaking the M and Ms.
Yeah, no, you're right. Absolutely. The long meetings need candy. And I feel like I, just me eating it alone, well, it's not good for me.
Okay. My goodness, we're up to tax refunds.
Sarah Muska Selectman, I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling $1,339.60.
Selectman Norde will second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Before we move on to selectmen's reports, I just want to make sure that I draw your attention to, in your packet, it was for Agenda Item 10E. We did get a constituent email pertaining to concerns about charter. And I just wanted to make sure you guys saw that and, and considered that as we're talking about this. Oh, okay. This is the longest selectmen's report I have ever written. So in in deference to people's time, I've, I've highlighted a couple of things I want to share and the, the full one will be incorporated into the minutes and is available on Facebook. However, I'm not going to read you every painstaking word in this because it's, it is the longest one I've ever written. I do want to touch on the storm though. So over the last eight days, much of town government's focused on recovery efforts associated with the tropical storm. I want to start by recognizing our outstanding public servants who worked incredibly well together and rose to the occasion during that event. Our police department, Department of Public Works, Community Services Department, both fire departments and ambulance association really, really rose to the occasion and did a fantastic job in really difficult circumstances, not because, not just because of the, the townwide power outage and the storm devastation, but also doing it in the middle of a pandemic in which you can't meet in person with no cell phone service and limited email. It was really an impressive show on, by our employees and volunteers that did a great job. During the course of that event, we held twice daily phone calls with our EverSource community liaison. And there's going to be plenty of well deserved beating up on EverSource over the, the coming months. They were not prepared. They, they did not respond well. But East Windsor was serviced by a gentleman named Ed Davis, who was a, a great partner to us in making sure that we were communicating with them where our, our major trouble points were. And he was, he was doing the best he could to marshal resources to address those. So whereas EverSource in total deserves the beating they're, they're going to get, I just want to share that we were very well served by a gentleman who was constantly accessible to us and sharing information as readily as we wanted it. And so we were, we were meeting in the morning to, to figure out what the goals for the day were. And we were meeting in the evening to determine if those goals had been objective, had been accomplished. If not, why not? And what we were going to do better the next day. So I just want to thank Ed Davis from EverSource for his work during that whole thing. With power now restored, I understand that there are still some lingering issues with cable and, cable and internet, particularly for people who are serviced by Cox Communications. I was in contact with their representative today. And as of the conversation this afternoon, they represented that about 1.5% of their customers in East Windsor were still without power or were still without cable and internet. But they're working to restore that. They had crews in the community today working with that. They were predominantly focused on the South Water Street area to restore service over there. They have a bit more work to do. In fairness to them, they in large part weren't able to get started on their recovery work until EverSource had at least cleared and made safe roadways and, and made sure power lines were, were de-energized. So they had a delay in getting started. That's not an excuse. I'm just saying that they also are working to get things back up to speed as quickly as possible. But they had a few days lag time where they just weren't doing the things they needed to be doing because it wasn't safe. So in the emergency call I had this evening with Governor Ramon's team, there was, there were a couple of comments that were made about COVID-19 and the state's positioning in relation to that. So first, Connecticut's seven day rolling average for positivity rates in new COVID testing is 0.7%, which is a very good number by national standards and, and is one of the two best in the nation. We alternate, depending on the day, we alternate between Connecticut and Maine as being the lowest positivity rate for new test confirmations, which is a good indicator. The administration did note that this positivity rate is likely to be as good as it is going to get until there is a vaccine available. So the notion that we're going to get anywhere below that is not realistic. So we are looking at the COVID normal right now until there is a vaccine that is widely available. Helping to keep those numbers in check is the, the availability of testing, something Connecticut has done well, something East Windsor has done well. We continue to have testing available both for live culture and for antibodies every Wednesday from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at East Windsor High School. It is likely that that location will change with the start of school, but until then, we're going to keep doing it there, at which point we would pivot to doing them at Scout Hall instead. Not Scout Hall, but Abbey Road, the parking lot in the back. We have a couple of new staff that have joined us in the last few weeks and I want to welcome Amy Lamb as our new town clerk and Mike DiAmato as our interim town planner. Amy, as you folks know, worked for us previously and came to us as the town clerk from Wellington. And Mike is a consultant with a company called CHA. And he and his firm have worked in many municipalities in Eastern Connecticut to offer planning functions, regulatory functions, POCD Development Services and Economic Development. Mike will be with us for the next few months as we recruit and onboard a, a new town planner and a new zoning enforcement officer. We're excited to have them both and they both have jumped right in. I mean, or Amy, her first, her second week here was when they're doing a never before tried presidential primary largely by absentee ballot when you can't open a building to the general public. So she's had a good baptism by fire and, and Mike has dived right in as well. Participating in planning and zoning discussions and meetings, offering opinion and professional guidance. It's been, actually, it's been a really good couple of weeks here from a staff perspective. The town is working closely with the Silverman Group to help them get in their business up and running as quickly as possible. Within the last few weeks, we've had meetings with them and our legal traffic authority, the Planning and Zoning Commission. And just today, we held a pre-development meeting with them to help them understand the things that they'll need to do in a step-by-step fashion. They're interested in breaking ground this month and expect to have construction on that building done by the end of the calendar year. So they are, they are a well-oiled machine and we are doing everything we can to be equally as accommodating to them as they get going. Gravel Pit Solar, the large scale, large grid scale solar development that's going to go on the Charbonneau pit has submitted their application for approval to the Connecticut Siting Council, which starts that process. And they've launched their local website. So members from the public can participate in an open house and learn more about that project. The Tax Collector has reported that we are only slightly off in terms of our normal collection rate for the first half of the year. And she expects that by the time the October 1st date arrives, we will be substantially on par with past years, which is quite encouraging given the COVID economy and it's quite a relief. Our town treasurer has also been working with Deputy Chief Hart to submit our FEMA reimbursement request for COVID-19 expenses incurred through June 30th. There will be a second opportunity to do this for expenses incurred after June 30th. The submission has been submitted to FEMA and it's currently under review with them. The Community Services Department remain actively engaged in summer work despite the COVID circumstances. Park and Rec made a, a step towards normal activities by running two half-day day camps in July. And participating children were very good about obeying mask requirements, which is an encouraging sign as the discussion around returning to school in September continues. Park and Rec staff are also trying to, trying to determine what, if any, school programming, school after school programming will be available. Once we go back to school, it's particularly complicated because we won't have access to school buildings and transportation will be a bit of an issue that they're trying to figure out how to overcome if we're able to find another location at which to bring children. Back to school stuff is underway. The Social Services Department is working on that. And this year they're requesting that if people are making donations, they donate gift cards to the Community Services Department and then town staff will go and purchase the necessary school supplies themselves. The reason for that is because some of the back to school supplies this year are going to be a lot different than they have been in the past. You're going to be looking for gloves and masks and individual hand sanitizers and different things other than the paper and the pencils and the, you know, the glue sticks and whatever would conventionally go into a back to school offering from the town. We're going to have to think about providing COVID-related materials as well. Those are the highlights. Again, this was the longest thing I have written as a selectman. So I'll spare you guys the, the painstaking nitty gritty and just leave you with that. So with that said, I would call on Selectman D'Souza.
Yeah, I want to apologize. I don't have a written itemization of things that have been done over the last couple of weeks due to some medical issues again. But I do want to publicly say how proud I am of our first selectmen. Our town employees, they've done an excellent job under the harsh conditions that they've had, had to work on the last few weeks. Everybody knows that I'm very much still attached to Park Hill and those residents up there. And you can't imagine how thrilled those residents up there were when the police chief and Jason went up there to address their needs up there. Brought them cots, brought them water, asked them what they needed. And the staff up at Park Hill, making sure that all 84 residents up there were fed all dare were fed all during the four days that they were out of power and coming in and checking on them. So kudos to everybody that was involved in that. They really feel like they are now part of the community. So thank you, Jason, for that. And thank the Public Works Department for such a small group of people. They did a phenomenal job for the town of East Windsor. If people took a ride around town and they saw, or if they just listened on Facebook what people were saying. I've been in town for what, maybe 38 years altogether now. And I've never seen a fire marshal drive around town. But there was one driving around town the first day of the storm, making mental notes of what was going on and actually stopped here on Rice Road to address a tree that fell on a roof to make sure that the wires attached to the house weren't going to be problematic for the residents. So kudos to that person. And I'm not sure if that was Broadbrook or if that was Warehouse Point that came out. I'm not, I'm not even sure, but it happened. I've never heard that before. So kudos to whoever that was that come out and did that. And the Fire Department, Warehouse Point Fire Department, we take for granted water. But if you have septic system and well water, like most of us have on this side of town, Warehouse Point Fire Department and then others came after them, opened up the outside ticket for anyone to come and fill. And it's my understanding when I follow through that a lot of people had taken advantage of that. So everybody pitched in from neighbors helping neighbors. Phenomenal under such trying times. So kudos to everybody involved. And that's all I have right now. But I'll catch up on my report as far as the election process. The last three days, that's what I've worked on, setting up for the elections, doing the elections yesterday and coming back this morning. And then it continues on with the executive order that passed at 4:37 yesterday, allowing for, I say that sarcastically because we should have been given some advance warning on things like that. And then a ton of questions that had to be asked during the day. How do we close out at night? Do we close out or do we hold it open, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So in the end, there will be a report coming out. I met with Angelo this morning to go over some of the issues that I had, issues that he has, issues that others have had regarding this process. Because I think if there's any failure this month, it's been the failure on the part of the Secretary of State's office and what they provided to us. And not in a very timely manner. But we got through it. And we'll get through it tomorrow. So I'll have a report forthcoming, providing nothing else happens between now and then. So again, thank you, everybody, for all your efforts.
Thank you, Marie. Sarah.
Sarah Muska Selectman. As the tropical storm made its way through East Windsor, leaving its mark on our community, we struggled to clear our roads, clean up damaged property, and patiently waited for electricity to be reinstated. We were all truly in this together. It was great to see our community come together and help one another during this time. I'd really like to recognize and thank our first selectman, Jason Bowza, on keeping communication open and keeping the public updated and informed through his Facebook posts and his telephone calls. His leadership through this crisis was instrumental in helping our community put the pieces back together so quickly. I'd also like to thank our emergency management, Public Works Department, our fire departments, and the rest of our town employees who worked tirelessly through the week to clear our streets, remove trees from home, and basically do what was ever needed for residents. On Monday, July 20th, the Board of Education held a special meeting. Greg Powers was introduced as the new Director of Food Service. Mr. Powers brings years of experience in the food service industry as a certified chef and was responsible for budgetary measures, including efficiency and cost control in his previous jobs. Discussion began on the possibility of reopening schools in the fall. Based on a model from another state, it has been determined that the district will go through approximately 5,000 disposable masks per week for our students, based on the rate of one mask per student per day. The district has ordered 10,000 adult masks, 500 face shields, and clear masks for speech impaired students. The school system installed 45 touchless faucets in our schools at a cost of $16,000. As the school system is paying for all needed supplies and implementations upfront, they are still awaiting a reimbursement of $161,000 from the CARES Act. A survey was sent to all parents in regard to their children's learning in reference to the coronavirus pandemic. There were 371 responses, which is one-third of our student population. Some of the results were as follows. 85% of our student families have access to email. 32% of our students don't know if they will be returning to school, but 50% of them are likely to extremely likely to return. 41% of 324 responses won't allow their children to return to school if a stay-at-home order is still in effect. 16% of students won't return to school if they are required to wear a mask. The Board of Education is holding a special meeting, or holding their regular meeting this evening to discuss more of their reopening plan. And their recorded Zoom video will be available, so those that missed it can watch. On Tuesday, July 28th, the Planning and Zoning Commission met. I listened in on the continued public hearing on the Broadbrook Meadows re-subdivision at the corner of Depot Street and East Road. And I'm sure that Selectman Baker will be reporting on that. On Sunday, August 2nd, I completed the Hearts Around Connecticut Challenge, which was completing a 500K in 63 days to benefit the Connecticut Food Bank. And all proceeds will be used to alleviate hunger in our state and assist families in need. On Monday, August 3rd, the Warehouse Point Fire District held their regular meeting. I had some difficulty listening via Zoom with the, it was a little bit, not very good reception. I did hear that there were 51 fire calls and 76 fire inspections that were completed in the month of July. And last night, I did attend the Broadbrook Fire Meeting. Discussions between the town and the Fire Department continue to take place in regards to the ordinance creating a town fire department, which would equalize tax station for fire services in town. The Fire Department responded to 35 calls last week in regards to the tropical storm. And they did discuss how they rescued a horse out of the mud, which they were really excited to have done. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Nice job, Sarah. Thank you. Selectman Baker.
Sorry, start right off with getting off of mute. So I guess I'll pick up where Sarah had mentioned. I did miss the Planning and Zoning meeting last night, which was the continuation of the public hearing for the Broadbrook Meadows. So I don't know what happened last night. I was on vacation. Continued again, okay. So they did, they got through a lot of it, the previous meeting, and then it looks like they didn't quite finish last night. But Wetlands was canceled because of the storm and it didn't have any applications anyway. So it wasn't a big meeting. We're just working on the Wetlands fee ordinance that we put on hold for COVID. And now we're picking back up and we're going to try to finish as soon as we can. But that would have been the only thing we would have worked on and we had to pick that up next month. So other than that, I was on vacation and everything was canceled because of the storm. And I'll just add that by chance, I had the opportunity to attend one of the calls that were being held throughout the emergency of the 9:00 a.m. and the 5:00 p.m. to get people's power on. And it was one of the last calls that they had. It was Saturday, 5:00 o'clock. But I was struck, the teamwork that was there, the two chiefs of the fire departments, and other staff from the fire departments, the police chief, the gentleman from Eversource that Jason mentioned earlier, Lenny and Joe, Jason, of course. The level of detail that they were checking into, I mean, literally, everybody was bringing in, hey, did you get this one done? Did you get that one done? Can we confirm that this special case is done? They're really keeping an eye out for every, not just the big critical stuff, but the one homeowner that, you know, needed oxygen or, you know, any other special service and needed special attention. They, it was just an incredible amount of teamwork and dedication and hard work. And these people all have their own families that they had to neglect so they could do this for the rest of us. I know Jason was in the same boat as a lot of us was. I had no power, no water. He has a small kid and a wife. I had to ship them off and take care of the town. So a big thank you to all of the team and thank you to Jason for leading that up. I think we, I think we can be proud of our response as a whole. And I think it could have gone a lot worse. And it was, was, was as good as it possibly could have been. And so just, I just want to say thanks. So that's to all of the people on that call. It was a lot of professionalism and dedication. And I know it got started rough, you know, with just a lot of stuff up in the air. And they worked through it all. And the amount of camaraderie and dedication was really apparent. Just want to say thanks again.
Selectman Norde.
Okay. On July 28th, I also attended the Planning and Zoning meeting, which again, they talked about, you know, Meadow Brook and that ongoing thing. Alan and Sarah have already reported on that. It's nice going last. Everybody's talked about everything. I don't have to say much. Not that I had a long report to begin with. On July 31st and August 7th, I attended outdoor concerts at the Connecticut Trail Museum. This has been the museum's way of trying to make up for lost donations during the pandemic. It's my understanding that all the bands that have been doing this for no charge as kind of a, you know, charity to the museum, which I think deserves some praise. Remember, the Trail Museum is one of the town's few tourist attractions, but it's also a nonprofit. So it's great to see residents, artists, and businesses chipping in to keep them going. They do have more concerts upcoming. And you can get more info on that on Facebook or online. I want to thank Sarah for covering the Broadbrook Fire Department meeting for me last night. I've had a lot of stuff going on here at home that I just had to attend to last night. So I was able to get some of that taken care of. And she took care of that for me and reported on. I too would like to commend, you know, all town staff on their extra efforts during last week's tropical storm. Everybody did a great job at stepping up, pulling together, and pretty much helping the town get back to normal, whatever that is these days. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We're going to turn to public participation. This is the public's second opportunity to address the board. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. We will have an executive session tonight. So I would ask for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CGS 1-200 subsection 6B.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Selectman Norde will second that.
All in favor of going into executive session? I'll call the roll. Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza. Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Okay. Peg, I don't know how long we're going to be. You don't need to hang around. You can catch the tail end of the recording later. Or I can catch up on what the motions are and whatnot.
Sounds great. I have 9:25, Jason. Is that what?
Yes, ma'am, 9:25. We're in executive session.
Thank you.
You have a great night. Thank you.
You too.
And then there were five. Okay, I've got two things.
Recording.
Yo, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
It is 10 o'clock. We'll come out of order and reconvene. Is there any further business to come before the Board of Selectmen meeting this evening?
Selectman Norde will move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Motion made by Selectman Norde, seconded by Selectman Baker. It's non-debatable. All in favor? Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Selectman Baker. We are adjourned at 10:01.